Hi, good afternoon. We'll get started in just a couple of minutes. Welcome everyone and thank you for joining us this afternoon. My name is Kathy Windman and I'm on the Board and Executive Committee of the JCRC. JCRC works on behalf of the many Jewish organizations in our orbit. For me, JCRC's advocacy of Jewish values, including our stewardship of the earth for all of its inhabitants is especially meaningful. I'm thrilled we can have this conversation today with two people steeped in the work of building momentum to address climate change. But first, I'd like to introduce my fellow board member Samantha Joseph, who will be moderating today's conversation. Driven by a commitment to social justice, Samantha is currently leading the Vaccine Equity and Community Outreach Efforts at the Reggie Lewis Mass Vaccination Site. Samantha recently finished up her role as a Senior Advisor to the Jewish Engagement Team of the Biden for President Campaign and has also led corporate environmental sustainability programs. Sam, your turn.
Thank you so much Kathy. As Kathy mentioned, I am very proud to be a board member of JCRC. And as the daughter of a rabbi, I learned about Tikun Olam very early in life. And it was really a foundational value. And so the opportunity to join the Board of JCRC a couple of years ago and to really be part of an organization that's giving a voice to some of the most vulnerable people in our community has been very meaningful. Since joining the Board, I did have the honor of leading a trip to Israel for the Massachusetts Senate in 2016 and really got to see firsthand how much we can learn from the work that's being done in Israel, specifically on climate change, but on so many issues. So today, we're here because JCRC is the convener of local and state officials on issues of importance to the Jewish community that impact us not only in Boston, but in Israel as well. And climate change, as we know, is a challenge that knows no borders and will require partnerships across government, academia, and the nonprofit sector to really address such a challenging issue. So today, we're going to dive into that conversation with two people who have a deep understanding of building coalitions, particularly in the space of addressing climate change. So I'm very happy to be able to introduce Boston City Councilor Michelle Wu and Dr. Tarek Abu Hamid. Counselor Wu is a mom, a daughter of immigrants, and a fierce believer that we can solve our deepest challenges through building community. As a Boston City Councilor, Michelle has worked in coalition to deliver bold systemic change and redefine what is possible through activist city leadership across our neighborhoods. And Dr. Abu Hamid, from East Jerusalem, holds a Bachelor's and a Master's of Science in Chemical Engineering from Gaza University and a PhD in Chemical Engineering from Ankara University. In 2008, he established the Center for Renewable Energy and Energy Conservation at the Araba Institute and now serves as its director. You can find full bios on our website and we're going to drop that link into our chat function. And I also, I just want to open the conversations and we're going to give each of our speakers a chance to give a few remarks and then we'll get into some questions. And I want to remind everyone that you can use the Q and A function throughout their remarks and then we'll have a chance to bring up some of those questions into the discussion later. So we'd like to start with Counselor Wu.
Thank you so much. It's such an honor to be here as part of this program and to be sharing some of the work and the hopes that I believe residents from all across our city are sharing when it comes to this very pressing issue that both seems at once so large and so all encompassing and yet tangible across each one of our communities and facets of all our lives. So I had, I wanted to save more time for dialogue if possible. I had three points that I wanted to emphasize. One, quickly on the urgency of climate change. Two, on how this is something that cities and at the local level, we can see tremendous action and progress on. And three, kind of what I believe is the secret to unlocking true action on all of this. So just a few words on how urgent this is, right? I know in some ways I'm saying this to a crowd of folks who have already chosen to be part of a conversation on this and may not need much explaining at all. But I will focus this on Boston in particular, right? We all know the science, the international reports that have come out about the very short window of time we have to take drastic action across our economy and society to keep warming below a certain temperature threshold, after which the planet and all of our food systems and health systems will begin to face tremendous stress and threat. And so we're operating on that timescale, that we need to stay below that threshold. We have about, you know, at this point, nine years left to get there. This has been a problem that we had about a decade window or 12-year window before and we haven't seen as much action under the last administration in this country that we need to really, really ramp up over the next few years. But what does this mean for Boston? Boston, in fact, is one of the most vulnerable parts of the world when it comes to climate change. We were called out, you know, in the eastern coast of the United States as one of the six most vulnerable regions in the world. We have already seen more days of what's called sunny day flooding in Boston than any other coastal city in the United States, meaning that even in days without wind, without rain, without any storm whatsoever, with sun in the sky, we are already seeing the water levels rising to the extent at which it's spilling over and causing flooding. I was just out on Morrissey Boulevard, not too many months ago, marking King Tide, which now happens several times a year, just under a beautiful day where the water levels with the cycles of the moon mean that the flooding across a very key road and set of emergency routes is completely blocked for in major segments. And this is, again, short of those instances that we need to be prepared for when there are storms, when there are nor'easters and other major weather incidents. The main ways in which the Boston area is experiencing a very rapid acceleration of climate change is around flooding, which we see tangibly in the water levels. Precipitation, heavier storms, more frequent storms, as well as heat. We are projected to see a tripling of the number of high heat days defined as 90 degrees or more throughout the year. So we will go from right now somewhere around, you know, less than a month's worth of 90-degree days per year to basically an entire summer where every single day will reach above 90 degrees, which is a tremendous shift for our climate, but also a tremendous shift when it comes to what's possible for our workforce, how dangerous it makes outdoor work, how dangerous and how much of a health risk this poses for residents, particularly seniors, children, those who have underlying medical conditions. And so this is all happening in a faster and faster rate. And there's some historical context to this. In addition to just the climate and the way that temperature interacts with our soil and reinforces the storm. But going back, you know, now several hundred years in our city's history, we are a city that much of the downtown area was built on landfill, like human-made land. When Boston cut down so many of the hills in our city, dumped all of that soil into the water to fill in the back bay, right, which used to actually be a bay. And so much of East Boston and downtown. And so all of this human-made, artificial land, landfill is lower than natural land. And of course, that gives us just an even wider landmass that is vulnerable as the waters go up. And most of all, in terms of the urgency, we know that the burden of climate change is not shared equally or equitably. It is the very same communities that had borne the brunt of this pandemic, black, brown, immigrant communities, low-income areas that have contributed the least to climate change, who are disproportionately represented in exposure to air pollution from greater and greater traffic in the likelihood of facing flooding, but not being able to afford mitigation of exposure to high heat days. And so our environmental justice communities, many, many communities and neighborhoods in Boston must be centered as we're thinking about this work. I will call out that some neighborhoods in particular, right? Our Social Vulnerability Index in Boston shows that Dorchester, East Boston, Hyde Park, Mattapan, Mission Hill, and Roxbury are the neighborhoods at particular risk. And this is where climate risk layers on top of lack of transit access layers on top of lack of food access. And so the ways in which our communities are structured must be seen through a lens of equity in climate justice as racial and economic justice. The second point I want to make is just how much city leadership matters in this area. Of course, I am relieved and excited to see momentum and to continue pushing for the United States to return to a role where we are even acknowledging the science of climate change and doing something about it. But in addition to pushing momentum for the Federal Green New Deal, we have a roadmap at the local level, at the city level, for exactly how cities uniquely can contribute. Whereas the Federal Green New Deal lays ambitious and necessary connections between labor and resilience and infrastructure. At the local level, we can combine the ways in which cities can regulate buildings and development, the built environment, transportation and housing, food access, even in connection with our schools and small businesses. There are ways for city government and our actions as the regulator, as a purchaser in the market, you know, a procure of services, as well as a convener to be really laser-focused on ensuring that we're moving forward in the fight for climate justice. So I'm proud that my team has put forward the first city-level Green New Deal anywhere in the country. We lay out 15 specific policy planks that would be immediately implementable by city government. Of course, some that are kind of thought of in the traditional realm of climate activism, accelerating decarbonization deadlines, growing our tree canopy, really leaning into reducing emissions in a number of ways, but also emphasizing the workforce development opportunities we have to truly connect great local paying, high-paying jobs with the opportunities and the needs for infrastructure improvements. We want to also incorporate through our Green New Deal housing justice and racial equity and commitment to small business recovery that is equitable so that we are truly including everyone in the shared prosperity of the city. And so the last point I want to make, which is about what I believe is the sort of secret to how we should think about unlocking action on climate change, is how to bridge this sometimes tension between the short term and the long term. The here and now and so many other ways that we are trying to provide services for families' lives and sometimes what is discussed as 100-year problem, right? We hear those phrases around 100-year storm or 500-year storm. What is a chance of flooding occurs? Or we talk about the number of inches that the sea levels will be higher in 70 years from now or 100 years from now. But the reality is that the connection point to all of this is to understand that climate change and everything we need to do is just as much about physical infrastructure as it is about social infrastructure. In other words, this is a people-centered problem. And this is a people-centered opportunity for the city of Boston and for municipalities and state and federal government everywhere to tackle. Our Green New Deal is focused on justice and focused on a set of principles that should guide not only our work when it comes to traditional climate and reducing emissions, but really to build the kind of social infrastructure that matters and that truly ensures prosperity and equity across the board. There have been now multiple important studies into the impact of major weather incidents or natural disasters. What happens and what is it about certain communities that enables better survival rates or better resilience? And one of these studies looked into the heat wave that swept across Chicago in the mid-1990s. It was known that it would be coming and it was a sustained period of time with very, very high temperatures and many, many lives were lost in that period of time. And when researchers really peel back all the layers to understand exactly what happened across every community and keep in mind, as someone who knows the area very well, my parents first immigrated to this country from Taiwan and landed in Chicago, I can say very confidently that there are many similarities between Chicago and Boston in that both of our cities love sports, love politics, but also have such a strong sense of neighborhood and community in each area. There's just, there are in some ways silos between communities or a very strong sense of identity, neighborhood by neighborhood by neighborhood. And so when the researchers went back and looked, it turns out that the neighborhoods or communities that had the highest survival rates didn't exactly line up with income level, right? It didn't exactly line up with the amount that had been spent on physical infrastructure to prepare against this type of situation. In fact, the highest correlation between how well a specific neighborhood or community fared through this disaster was the social infrastructure, the degree to which residents felt connected to each other. And so that in this, for example, period of a heat wave in some neighborhoods, even though the income levels were not at the top of the spectrum, residents still knew each other, were still calling and checking on their neighbors, figuring out who needed to be taken to a cooling center or needed some shelter out of the sun or just needed to be, you know, had some groceries delivered so they wouldn't have to go out in the heat. And that kind of social infrastructure, the connection between our communities is, I believe, at the foundation of all of the challenges in policy that we're facing these days. The, in some ways, dissolution of knowing our neighbors, of trusting our people who may think differently, worship differently, live differently, look differently than us, but who have a same stake in the same sense of place. And so I believe that city government is uniquely able to earn back and build back that kind of community. I'm a huge proponent of block parties as a way to save our democracy, but to also recognize that the design choices we make, the infrastructure investments we make, the community building that we invest in through the public sector directly has an impact on that social cohesion and resilience. And in fact, the underlying factor that matters most of all, building a connected city. So from transit and food and schools and housing, every other way that we are pushing forward for a Green New Deal and the steps to end our climate crisis being the same steps to end poverty and to ensure equity. This is our charge that we can act on, that we can urgently bring people together for. And I'm really excited to dig into the conversation more. We'll leave it at that, but thank you so much for being part of this and for inviting me to join today.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. We look forward to diving in more to all the things you just shared. But we'll give first Dr. Abu Hamid a chance to share some remarks and then we'll go to some questions.
Okay, hi. Good afternoon. It's such an honor and pleasure to be with you today, especially to be a panelist with the Counselor Wu. This is a great honor for me. As the Counselor Wu mentioned, that the global temperatures are rising, the rainfall rates are decreasing, especially in the Middle East. We are facing serious and extreme weather conditions because of climate change, which is actually the most urgent global challenge that we are facing. At the Araba Institute for Environmental Studies, we are addressing and mitigating the impact of climate change through our academic curriculum, our joint research with our neighbors in Jordan, Palestine, and Israel, and also through our public outreach with our partners. I would like actually to share a few slides with you to give you some examples of the research that we do at the Araba Institute to combat climate change. The Araba Institute is located in the Araba Valley, in the Negev Desert in Israel. It's like 30 miles north to the Gulf of Elat or Akaba. Our mission at the Araba Institute is to advance a cross-border environmental cooperation in the face of political conflict. We do that to ensure that the shared environmental resources of our region will be protected from further degradation and loss. Our scarce environmental resources, especially here in the Middle East, will no longer be a source of conflict. Environmental cooperation in our region, we want that to be a model for other regions around the world. This is a photo taken by NASA, by satellite in the year 2015. It's a sandstorm that covered the whole eastern Mediterranean from Cyprus to Iraq. And this is just to show you that nature knows no borders. During this sandstorm, you can see some photos. The upper left one is from Jerusalem, the Jaffa Street. The right upper one is downtown Baghdad. And the photo at the bottom is in Lebanon. So the whole region faced this challenge before a few years. In this photo here, you see my village in East Jerusalem. This is the mosque, the tower of the mosque. And if you look to the middle of the photo, in the horizon, you can see two towers. These two towers are downtown Amman. This photo actually shows you how small the region that we live in. And the region that we live in, we share most of the resources. When I say the sources, that can be water, energy, and air because we live in a very tiny region. The West Bank and Israel, we share the same mountain aquifer, the same water resources. Gaza shares with Israel the coastal aquifer. Jordan shares with Israel many rivers, especially the Jordan River. And the regional climate change models predict a further increase in the frequency and duration of severe droughts as ongoing result of the climate change. And we see this very clearly in our region. Sometimes we have the heavy rain in one day. Sometimes we pass the winter without any rain. The region that we live in has the highest percentage of transponded rivers. The rivers that we have or the water resources, they provide about 60% of our freshwater supply. And this is considered the highest rate of dependence on international basin in the world. Both countries, Israel and Jordan, rely on fossil fuels for their electricity production. We rely on coal and natural gas. And these are highly polluting fossil fuels. And all of you know what happened in the year 2012 or 11. It's the Arab Spring. And during the Arab Spring, ISIS took over the Sinai Peninsula and they destroyed the gas pipeline that provides Jordan and Israel with the natural gas that is necessary for the power production. And because of that disruption in the gas supply, Israel and Jordan had to switch from natural gas into oil for electricity production. And as a result of that, we saw a significant increase in the carbon dioxide emissions in both countries. Look here, in the year 2012, significant increase in CO2 emissions in Israel and the same thing also in Jordan. So the instability in such a small, important region doesn't only impact the political situation of the region, it also impacts the climate and the carbon dioxide emissions that are produced in the region. So what do we do at the Araba Institute? One of the projects that we have is Track to Environmental Forum, it's a civil society movement that brings different organizations from the region to increase and to prepare the ground for the future environmental agreements between Israel, Palestine, and Jordan. Some examples that we conduct at the Araba Institute is a five-megawatt solar energy plant in the Gaza Strip. Gaza actually faces a massive electricity shortage. People in Gaza receive two to like six hours of electricity every day. And this project can partially help the people get enough amount of electricity for their daily uses and also to treat the wastewater in the Gaza Strip. Another project is the WaterGym. WaterGym is an Israeli company that produces devices that they generate water, drinking water, from the air. And we know that in Gaza, almost 96% of the groundwater is polluted because of the penetration of untreated sewage or wastewater to the aquifers and also to the Mediterranean. We managed to convince the Israeli army to provide Gaza with three machines that are used to generate drinking water. Two machines are in hospitals, one machine is in a school. Another project is Ophir Grid Wastewater Treatment System. Wastewater treatment in Gaza is a major problem because of the shortage of electricity. They do not have enough electricity to treat the wastewater because it penetrates to the aquifer. So this project will be Ophir Grid, supplied with electricity using solar energy and will treat the wastewater and will produce water that can be used for agricultural purposes. Another project, which is one of the most important projects that we have in the Track to Forum, is the Young Professionals Forum. It's a project that brings young professionals from Palestine, Israel, and the many regions. They are entrepreneurs, they are young professionals that they know their communities and know the needs of the communities. We use the tool of environmental diplomacy. In the region, we use the environment as a diplomacy tool, as a sense diplomacy to bridge between people. We build networks and we help them to start their environmental projects in the region. To combat climate change, cooperation is very essential. And they wanted to use the phrase that was used by the US General Secretary, no country can succeed alone. Regional cooperation is very essential to combat climate change in our region. In our region, as you saw, we have water scarcity. We rely on fossil fuels, but these problems can be solved. And the most scarce resource in the Middle East is trust. Once you build trust between communities, between different organizations in Israel, Palestine, and Jordan, that is become very easy to solve and to have brighter future for the coming generations in our region. Thank you.
Thank you both for sharing so much about, you know, what work you're both doing and what some of the challenges you're facing are. And it's definitely interesting to hear some of the common challenges that you both experienced, I think particularly around coalition building, consensus building, and really bringing together the right people, you know, to address this issue. So maybe we could just start there, you know? And of course, the challenge of bringing together people across different countries, you know, and certainly is a little bit different than some of the things that we face in Boston. But we actually already got a question from the audience about how our cities working together, even within the state of Massachusetts. So maybe let's just start on the topic of coalition building. And what does that look like for each of you? How are you bringing stakeholders together? And what are some of the things you've learned in that process? Maybe we can start with Counselor Wu.
This is the, this is the most important part of any type of policymaking. And I would say, you know, in my eight years on the council, I have learned that it's not only to sort of maximize the chance of actually getting something done or passed or through and to build the kind of public pressure for that action to be taken inside government. But it's also to ensure that it actually delivers impact and that the results that we sometimes anticipate or hope for when drafting a piece of legislation or building out a program will never actually match up. will never actually match up unless, one, it has come from the lived experiences of people on the ground and our residents who have solutions. But also that community has been involved in the process of bringing about this change to then champion continuing it and deepening and carrying it on. And so I think, you know, sometimes we're in a city like Boston where, for example, everybody identifies as a Democrat on the Boston City Council, right? So we're in terms of just pure political affiliation or ideology, Boston is perceived to be much more progressive or left-leaning. But the challenge, particularly when it comes to big, big changes, such as the scale that we need to see for climate change, there is always the decision of when and how to and how much to deviate from the status quo to bring about something else. And of course, there are folks who are benefiting from or only know the status quo. And that, I think, is often the biggest shift of needing to build a coalition to truly bring together all perspectives on what the impacts intended and unintended might be from a policy and to lean in. So whenever we have taken on issues at the city level, I believe we've been able to do some previously thought impossible changes, such as implementing citywide what's called community choice energy, municipal aggregation, negotiating a new default electricity contract on behalf of all residents and small businesses seamlessly with a higher sourcing of renewable energy. We were told this would be impossible to do, right? When we started four years ago, that a city of Boston's size, it would just be too disruptive, too much, too complicated. But building that coalition, right? Having some of the utilities companies at the table, having residents from all communities, ensuring that we were seeing this as a two-way dialogue of not just tell us how to implement this, but what would this mean for the community and what questions would people have to feel comfortable and kind of keep spreading the word in the community? This is key and again goes back to why I believe the social infrastructure and building community, not around reacting to specific incidents or crises, but building that community to be durable for the long term and proactively is most important.
Thank you, Dr. Abu Hamid.
Look, here in the Middle East, especially with the political instability and the tension between countries, building coalition is not an easy mission. The Arab Institute is almost twenty-five years old. And we managed to convince our partners in Palestine and also in Jordan that the agenda of the Arab Institute is the shared environment. Israel is developed country, Palestine is Jordan are developing countries. And when you approach a partner in Palestine or in Jordan, we approach them under concept of mutual benefit. We share the same environment, we share the same resources. Protecting our environment from further degradation is a benefit for all of us, for the coming generations. We managed to build a trust with the partners, helped them to develop the right technologies to improve their lives. This is the most important element for someone who lives in a developing country. Because the only thing that they care of is how to bring the next meal for their families. So using the technologies that are developed in Israel to these rural communities in Palestine, in Jordan and sometimes in the Negev Desert and to improve their lives with the goal of protecting the environment, help us very much to build this trust and to widen this coalition.
Great. Thank you so much. We're getting some quite technical questions on the chat. So I think we may not get to cover the technical questions during this conversation, but perhaps we can follow up with each of our speakers and produce a list of answers so that we don't get too technical here. But if you could talk a little bit about, you know, some of the, you know, so in hierarchy of needs, right? Where we have such a pressing challenge, what are some of the most immediate next steps for each of you, you know, around this issue? So that we have a sense of how you're prioritizing what needs to happen. Counselor Wu, if you'd like to start.
I believe there are a couple of layers that we need to think through. One is just in general to really make this tangible for each community. And so I think, again, when we talk about sea level rise and we're often looking at the year 2070 or 2100 as a planning tool, it can get disconnected from, as you're saying, the hierarchy of needs that every parent or caregiver or family member is facing in that day. And so it is both about building the community infrastructure to talk about climate issues in a way that connects directly with housing instability and food access and education as it is organizing around the immediate crises, right? So there are examples in each community. In East Boston, we have been fighting an electrical substation, which would be an environmental hazard in already a community that has been disproportionately burdened with so many large population, environmental justice community in Chinatown and in communities of color across the city and state. We know the exposure to air pollution is disproportionately high. And in so many of our neighborhoods, right along the water, the flooding is more than inconvenience. It is exacerbating unsafe or unhealthy living conditions in many cases. It is restricting transportation and mobility to jobs and medical appointments. And so I think the most important is that in this moment of recovery from the pandemic, the flood of resources that we will receive, both to deal with the public health crisis and economic crisis, as well as I believe we will see federal resources for the climate crisis in the near term, that these have to be distributed equitably in a way that doesn't just put Band-Aids on situations, but connects to that underlying long-term community building and change.
Okay. I believe that the most pressing climate change issue will be our capacity to provide adequate food and water to every person in our region. This is a challenge we already struggling with. And the climate change will increasingly cause droughts and extreme weather events, as we see in our region. Both our water sources and agriculture production are very sensitive to these climate shifts. The potential future of food and water shortages will lead, and actually it's leading today to increased global unrest and political tensions, as we see in Egypt and also as we are seeing in Syria. So providing the people with the adequate amount of food and water and our capacity to do that, I think this is the most pressing climate change issue.
Thank you. Now that you've, you know, one of the joys of bringing you both together is, you know, to learn from both of your experiences. But I'd also like to give you a chance to ask each other questions or to kind of dig in more on what each other has said, you know. So just based on what you've heard from each other so far, is there any follow-up? Are there any questions that you've been thinking about that may benefit, you know, what the work you're doing in your own respective areas?
I will start. I so enjoyed Dr. Abu Hamid's presentation. One piece that I have been thinking about anyway for the city that really stuck out, that I would love your expertise and insight on is around the wastewater and management of efficiency of that. You know, Boston is in some ways surrounded by water. But because, again, the unique way that our landfill and historic sort of construction of the city's landmass happened, much of the city is on landfill, which requires recharge of the groundwater system. And so we've had some conversations about these issues. There's an opportunity to really do a lot more. Would love if you had advice on first steps, next steps, both on the actual infrastructure building and how to think about what technologies, but also the funding of it, right? When it's an issue that affects so many people, you know, how does the financing work?
Look, actually, most of our projects are funded by international organizations. And it's what convince these organizations to fund these projects is actually the shared society building. When I say shared society, it's not within one city, it's within a region. And the diplomacy tool that is used through these projects, you are not only benefiting the community, you are benefiting the whole region. You are building bridges through these environmental projects. And when it comes to collaboration with a developed country or developed city like Boston, actually this becomes more attractive to donors, especially benefiting from the high-tech or the knowledge in Boston and to transfer the knowledge from a developed region to a developing region. Landfills is a major problem also in our region, in Palestine and also in Israel and also in Jordan. Not only for the buildings or for expanding the cities here we face between collecting the natural gas or the landfill gas that you have to collect to prevent future disasters from the accumulation of the gas. And I'll be happy to share more information on these projects with you, it would be my pleasure.
Thank you.
Great. And Dr. Abu Hamid, I'll give you a chance. If there's any questions you have about what the city of Boston is doing or any places that you'd like to learn more about.
Actually, Counselor Wu mentioned the extreme weather conditions and the heat waves in Boston. Here, actually, we face that. We have very high heat waves and also cold waves that we are not prepared for. I know Boston, it's a very diverse city. And I would like to know how like this different culture works together when you face such an impact of climate change on heat waves.
Well, I think, I mean, the reality is we're still in the middle of all of those changes. And we do, I believe the city does as much as possible to try to communicate to residents. So again, thinking about the infrastructure that exists outside of crisis times is really important to already have multilingual messaging set up, as many residents as possible connected to a text messaging system to get major alerts when there might be an unexpected situation or some news that should go out citywide. As well as, there's a program in City Hall called the Green Evate Program, which is meant to really be a community-facing side to the environment department to build leadership teams and communications channels throughout each different community, geographically and by other communities. And so a lot of it, I believe, is making sure that there's as much that goes out ahead of time so that people know what to do, that it is coming, that there are cooling centers available which get opened up publicly. This has been very tricky during the pandemic to think about how to administer that. And luckily, there wasn't that much heat over this last summer. But there were a couple of instances where it didn't need to be deployed. And then finding ways just to address the mobility challenges as well, that many of the residents who may most need to access these cooling centers or get extra support might be homebound seniors or those living on their own. How do we think about actually connecting people physically, getting people to these locations? Or army, you know, providing the funding ahead of time so that residents can improve their homes and get access to low-cost or no-cost loans to be able to make sure that there's heat, adequate heating ventilation systems already installed in their own homes as well?
Thank you. So we're seeing another number of questions specifically about coalition building. And I think people would benefit from hearing maybe a specific example, you know, that you had to work through where there was a lot of complexity around who the stakeholders are and to the point that has been made, a lot of the people who are most impacted are the most vulnerable with the least maybe power or voice in the conversation. So I know that you mentioned the compressor station, which, you know, is something that has been a big challenge for parts of Boston. Could you just talk us, you know, maybe in a little bit more specific detail about what it looks like to build a coalition to address that issue? What are the types of groups that you need to include? And beyond just building trust, what are some of the next steps, you know, there to ensure that the city of Boston get the outcomes it's looking for?
And I feel almost silly going first on this question, knowing that Dr. Abu Hamid deals with international diplomacy. So I'll start with a very, very micro neighborhood level. And then I hope we can zoom out to the difficult stuff. I think I'll give an example because the station, the substation is one where it's just been such an awful series of events where there's an additional layer of that is that the actual decision-makers are disconnected from the city. And so we have both in terms of this type of infrastructure as well as gas pipeline infrastructure, which is regulated by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, which depending on which political administrations appointed which appointees, it has been complicated, their relationship with the oil and gas industry. And so we've had many instances where there's been nearly unanimous opposition from local and state-elected officials and community leaders. And yet, because the decision-making point actually was elsewhere, it's been extremely frustrating. I'll give an example where we saw success unexpectedly or I guess to counter expectations in building and passing our wetlands protection ordinance. This was the single biggest step that the city of Boston could have taken to require resilient development in our city. We had gone from a regulatory framework, which was largely built around a voluntary resiliency checklist, which would be negotiated with each large-scale developer. And the idea was that this, you know, the justification for that system was that it would provide more flexibility. And rather than regulating a specific technology, which might be out of date later on, we would run through a checklist and get to the maximum possible on each one. Well, there ended up just not being consistency across the board on what the baselines were. And particularly when it comes to valuable natural resources, which guard against, you know, can absorb flooding, which absorb heat, which are irreplaceable in some ways. The parcel-by-parcel look at it, one negotiation by another, it always would go in the favor of, well, you know, we will do this. And in this one instance, it's okay to lose this amount of green space. So we really needed a wider framework to look at it comprehensively. And this was a coalition that came together. The technical name of the ordinance is around wetlands. But we made sure to use the legal space within the law to apply the largest definition of that. So any natural resource areas, bring together, of course, those neighborhoods with specific wetlands in them, but also coastal neighborhoods, also parts of the city such as the Arnold Arboretum, where there's just a large swath of open space that would be impacted by encroaching development. And so we really thought about geographic representation. We thought about income representation, wanting to make sure that working-class communities were included and in the coalition multilingual communities and that there would be a regular mechanism inside to just keep the progress going. So once there was a structural commitment to say there's going to be a monthly meeting with the coalition to do this, then there was more of a sense of, okay, we're going then there was more of a sense of, okay, we're going to come back, we're going to keep pushing in the face of so much opposition, just to keep moving forward, just to try another angle. In fact, that coalition has gone on to take on other challenges as well after this legislation has passed, just to show the durability and the importance of community building to last beyond the individual issue.
So, you know, it's bringing the right people together and then setting them up to succeed and creating accountability structure and a schedule and, you know, a timeline around which you're going to deliver and and sort of to continue to meet those milestones. So that that's very instructive for us. Thank you. And Dr. Abu Hamid, maybe an example, you know, of a specific time where you've had to build a challenging coalition and what were the steps that you took?
Okay, so I'll give you an example of of coalition that we managed to establish with the Gaza Strip. This is a tough, tough region in Gaza. It's a city with 2 million people, almost 70% of them under the age of 30. Gaza is under the control of Hamas. So even a contact with Hamas is forbidden and it's really hard. They don't accept any kind of cooperation with any Israeli organization, even with environmental organizations. I mentioned the the challenge of electricity, lack of electricity in Gaza prevents the Gaza municipality or the Gaza government to treat the wastewater. Untreated wastewater is penetrating to the aquifer, the shared aquifer. And also, the wastewater treatment plants, they just dump the wastewater into the Mediterranean. 96% of the water in Gaza is polluted. Almost 100% of the beaches in Gaza are polluted. The water streaming in the East Mediterranean is south-north, so the waste is transferred to Israel, to Ashkelon, which is a city neighboring to the Gaza Strip. And Ashkelon is a house for the world's largest desalination plant. When the seawater is polluted, that impacts the desalination plant. So now we have, we have a mutual interest. We have an environmental problem that has a transponder aspect, lack of electricity in Gaza, untreated wastewater, polluted seawater, and millions of dollars are lost because the desalination plant is not functioning in the in Ashkelon. So we approached the Israeli army and we said that we are planning to build a 5-megawatt solar plant to have a major portion of that to treat the untreated wastewater. And for the Gazans, this will solve an environmental issue and also generate electricity for the people and will generate water to that can be used for irrigation. So this mutual interest was the key to build such a coalition. We have a partner organization in the in the West Bank. So they established the contact with the with the head of the municipalities in Gaza. And we had the advice to establish the connection with the Israeli army. So we had three organizations working in different countries to establish one project. And because we managed to build a trust with this Palestinian organization, that to build that coalition was I guess it was an easy, easy mission. That took us almost two years, but we managed to do that.
The time horizon for these, this coalition building, you know, can be long, especially in the face of the urgency of the problem, but at the same time, laying that foundation feels like it was material for you to make the progress that you did.
Abu Hamid, it took us two years to to build ours. So yours was very fast.
So we're coming to the end. So as, so I want to offer you both a chance to give some closing thoughts, but I'd love in those closing thoughts, if you could talk a little bit about how can the people who came here today, who are clearly interested in this issue and are invested in both addressing climate change in Boston and in Israel, how can they, what what further actions can they take at the individual level to be a stakeholder in this issue? And then also, what are some of the things that we think our cities, you know, that Boston and Israel can do together going forward to really address this issue? So if you could include those in your closing thoughts, that would be great.
Counselor.
Well, first, I'm just, again, it's been such a joy and an honor to be part of this conversation. Thank you so much. Samantha, thank you, Dr. Abu Hamid, for all of your insights. I look forward to following up on some of the the technical receiving that wisdom. I would say for for anyone who's part of this, who wants to stay involved, please reach out. I'll make sure I put my contact information in the chat, first of all. But also know that there are so many organizations doing this work on the ground now who could really use your support. And I would really look into organizations, I think some that particularly have impact and could use support are those that focus on the intersection between climate justice and equity and racial equity as as their their primary drive. And so it's organizations like ACE, Alternatives for Community Environment, like Green Roots, which really focuses and spans the Chelsea, East Boston area, but all throughout the city on many of the issues we discussed. Sunrise is another organizing and local coalition that is doing incredible work and offers a regular forum to get involved. And then outside of either financially supporting or getting involved with those organizations, think about ways to plug into the policy conversations that are happening as well. It's, I think some folks might be surprised just how low the threshold is in terms of a number of emails that an elected official has to get to really trigger a strong sense that I should do something about this. And so the game of politics is to try to get the greatest number of people to agree to push for the fewest number of things together. And you can build that coalition by adding things to that list. But if you have a particular issue as small as a neighborhood empty parcel that could be turned into a park, or as large as trying to move forward with legislation to 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 transition away from fossil fuel infrastructure altogether at the state level, there are ways to plug in with your local or state elected officials to move that forward. And I'm always happy to help brainstorm on those issues, but now is the time with a closing window of urgency that we all have to be doing whatever we can. And of course, we want to each take whatever individual steps we can, but I am always of the philosophy that it is not the right approach to put this burden on individuals, that if we just recycle a little bit more or, you know, save water a little bit more, we want to do everything we can. But the larger responsibility is on the public sector, on our governmental policymakers to take that system-wide change. And so we could really use everyone plugging in to to keep the urgency going on that.
Thank you.
It was really great pleasure to be with you. I would like to thank the JCRC in Boston, Samantha Emily, for this important event. I gave you like very small sample of the of the projects that we do at the Institute. And if you would like to hear more about the Institute and the projects that we conduct, I'm sure our friends of the offices in Boston. So you can just search that, friends of the Institute, and I'm sure they will be more than happy to provide you with more information. Look, when it comes to policy, to the public, to the public sector, even in our region, in a region that has countries that are developing, to convince policymakers to pay attention to climate change is a challenge. But we don't have the luxury to give up. We have to act locally and to think globally. The climate change impact we are facing today, it impacts every aspect of our daily daily lives. And that's what we do at the Institute. We bring Palestinian, Jordanian, international Israeli students, and we prepare the future environmental leaders of our region. So it's step by step, I think we can reach the final goal. And before I forget, I would like to wish you all
Thank you so much. And I know JCRC looks forward to being a partner to both of you in this important work. And so we're going to put just a few links in the chat before we go. One is to learn more about JCRC's Israel work, including our Boston Partners for Peace Initiative. And so that'll be in the chat shortly. And also to learn about our advocacy work across the board and many of the things that we're doing with the state and the city of Boston. And the final thing is I just want to invite all of you to join us for our annual Yom HaShoah Holocaust Remembrance Program on Sunday, April 11. There'll be a link in the chat to register. This will be a virtual program this year. And you know, it's a very meaningful time of the year to commemorate the Holocaust and to come together as a community. So we hope to see many of you there. And thank you so much to Counselor Wu and to Dr. Abu Hamid for joining us for this really important discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.